I will call the regular meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
Still moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Public comments, is there anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the telephone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total $2,483,046.44. Of that, the large dollar amount on there is the county social services second half allocation and the amount of $1,986,120. And then we have secondary roads, $182,353. Attorney's office, $21,287. And finally sheriff's department, $160,853. Everything looks normal.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Perry? I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
Second?
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number four, receive project updates from department heads, elected officials. Ryan, good morning.
Morning Board, Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. Planning on going out with construction, I see our Grundy Road construction project continues. They're continuing grading along that route. We did have some work start up on Dunkerton Road, the cold in place was started last week and then just finished here yesterday between Alcoran and Highway 63. We will wait for that to kind of cure and then we'll have the papers come in next on that project. Bridge crew has started bridge removal on a bridge down on Quarry Road, just west of Hammond, or just east of Hammond Avenue. Other than that, our maintenance crews earlier in the week weren't out much with the dry weather. I imagine with some of the moisture from today, they'll be out blading the remainder of the week.
Okay. Any questions for Ryan?
Thank you.
Any other department head or elected official in the boardroom? Amanda?
Morning Amanda.
Amanda Fezner, HR Director, just want to remind that we have another employee vaccine clinic that's going to be held on Friday, May 21st. We're just encouraging employees that if they received their second dose at the previous clinic, that they can receive their second dose. And those that want to receive a first dose are welcome to as well and they'll coordinate with the health department to get their second dose at a later time. So just sending out those reminders to department heads and to employees. Any questions at all?
Thank you.
All right.
Any others in the boardroom? Any department head or elected official on Zoom, do you have any updates? Okay. Approval of the minutes from May 11th.
Still moved.
Only 21.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. We are going to have two hearings, the times are approximate. One is approximately at 9:05 a.m., it's ordinance number 77-250, a rezone request by Bob Schoff, Scoff. And the second one is at approximately 9:07, it's ordinance number 77-251, a rezone request by Jeffrey Ruselow. The consent agenda.
Still moved. Second?
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number 8A, contracts and agreements. A resolution that the best bid received from TK Elevator Company formerly O'Keefe Elevator, Des Moines, Iowa, for elevator servicing for county facilities with a monthly fee of $1,230 and a term of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Be approved and for the chair to sign the contract contingent on the receipt of the certificate of insurance and after a review by the county attorney as recommended by Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent. And we had received three bids, one from TK Elevator Company for $1,230, one from Schumacher Elevator Company for $1,555, and one from Cone Incorporated for $1,600. Dana?
Yeah, that's really it. We sent it out to six different vendors and we got these three bids back. The low bid went to TK Elevator, which was formerly O'Keefe, which we've had a previous agreement with, so we went with them.
Is that who we had the past year? Is O'Keefe?
Yep. We've had them, it looks like we've had a contact with them since 2014.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Move to approve?
Second.
We already have one more.
Okay.
We doubled it. Roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number 9A, a resolution to approve the amendment to the list of financial institutions to be depositories of Blackhawk County funds.
Still moved.
In conformance with all applicable provisions of state statute 12B and 12C of the Court of Iowa in amounts not to exceed the maximum deposits approved for each respective financial institution as submitted. Any comments or questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry, man, we're concerned.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number 9B, a resolution to designate the submitted named financial institutions as 2021 depositories of Blackhawk County funds in conformance with all applicable provisions of subsection 12B and subsection 12C of the Court of Iowa in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for each respective financial institution as submitted.
Still moved. Second?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 9C, a motion to accept the resignation of Glenn Keith as the Commissioner of the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Commission effective June 30th, 2021.
Still moved.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
Just that Glenn was a real leader on the Commissioner, the years he's been on, he's been, done some good stuff, got us going in the right direction. So I want to thank him for his service.
I'll second Supervisor White's comments.
Yeah, Glenn's, he's done a good job and he's an asset to the community.
First time I met him was at one of our fundraisers we had for Honor Flight. And I, he had his uniform on, I thought he was part of the East High ROTC and I told him, "The kid, you guys are lining up over there." And he stands there for a minute and I go, "East High kids are lining up over there." He goes, "I know, I want to talk to Frank and you about what we're going to do." And I go, "Where's your boss at?" Because he's so young looking, looks like he's about 15 years old.
The only criticism I have is after the Marines, he joined the Army. Glenn, we thank you for your service. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Item 9D, a motion that the travel requests submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same $737.08 to attend the ITAG Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled for June 15th to June 18th, 2021.
Still moved.
Second?
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Item 9E is a motion to approve the personnel requisition for an account technician full-time starting no sooner than July 1st, 2021 due to a retirement, as recommended by Grant Veder, County Attorney.
Still moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Item 9F is a hearing on the proposed ordinance number 77-250, the Scoff rezone.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
Motion, the way of the first reading, as notice was published on May 11th, 2021.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, yeah, just.
All those opposed, say no. Seth?
Okay, all right, for the first request, we have a rezon, the Planning and Zoning Committee and at its regular meeting on April 20th, 2021, reviewed the request by Bob Schoff to rezon 0.231 acres from residential suburban district to commercial district. It was moved by Bozier and seconded by Shaver to approve the rezon request for .23 acres from residential suburban district to see commercial district in order to have a 2,560 square foot storage building with an addition of 1,126 square feet. And the addition is for his kind of hobby farm and a motion carried unanimously. This property is identified as a commercial on the future land use map and this is kind of one of those sites that may have not been zoned properly initially when the rezon ordinance was adopted, because it's always pretty much been a commercial, several businesses were in there and whatnot, so we're just trying to get Mr. Schoff in compliance with the zoning ordinance so that he can do an extension for his building. And that's pretty much the staff report.
Any comments or, any comments or questions for Seth?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second? All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no, the hearing is closed. Mr. Veder, did we have any written comments?
No, sir.
We now have a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
Still moved. Second?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
We now have the ordinance adoption that the ordinance amending ordinance number 36 is amended, the Blackhawk County, Iowa agricultural preservation zoning ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 250 to section 6, paragraph B, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Ben Schoff. And to consider the same for adoption and if adopted would be known as ordinance number 77-250.
Still moved. Second?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Now on to the next hearing. We have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing for hearing on the proposed ordinance number 77-251, Ruselow rezone.
Still moved.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Motion to waive the first hearing.
Second?
All those in favor of waiving the first hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is waived. Seth?
Okay, all right, yeah, this is a request north of 5915 acre road, the Ruselow rezone request, rezoned 1.84 acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct a new single family home. It was moved by Shaver and seconded by Sherretts to approve the request, rezoned 1.84 acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct a new single family home. The request was approved with a 4-2 vote. Nagel and Bozier denied the request because they were concerned about taking farmland out of production. The property's been zoned agricultural district since 1982. And just want to have it be known that the site does have a moderate lease score of 237. The applicant, Jeff Ruselow, is a sixth generation farmer in Blackhawk County and has been farming for the last 20 years. He has 20% ownership stake in the Ruselow Brothers, Inc. The applicant and his family have been eyeing a 300 by 300 piece of ground to build a home of land on that is owned by the family. Jeff Ruselow has indicated that his father plans on retiring in the near future and the day-to-day operations of the farm will eventually be handed over to him. So that pretty much explains the rezon request, also explains the farm connection. And then it didn't have high, the site didn't have high agricultural value, just moderate.
Any comments?
Where is it closest fire hydrant?
Not too far away, because it's like right on the city limits. So I'm, gosh, about a half mile.
Any other questions? Any written comments?
What fire department takes care of them?
Hudson.
Hudson, okay.
That's volunteer too, right?
Looks so, yes.
Any written comments?
No, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the hearing as oral written comments were received and placed on file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We now have a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
Still moved. Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
We now have the ordinance adoption that the ordinance amending ordinance number 36 is amended, the Blackhawk County, Iowa agricultural preservation zoning ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 251 to section 6, paragraph B, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Jeffrey Ruselow. And to consider the same for adoption and if adopted would be known as ordinance number 77-251.
Still moved. Second?
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
All set, thanks Seth.
Thank you very much.
Item number 9H is a discussion and possible board action to modify the county facilities' mask policy.
I see that Dr. Bonier is with us today. I had reached out to the health department after the CDC's new guidance and I also reached out to legal, looking at, my first idea was that we could set the policy and somehow have a sense of how many county employees were vaccinated. We have a sense on the community, what the community number is, but there are a lot of privacy issues that come into play there. And so the recommendation I've received is just to simply add a line that says the county mask policy no longer applies to fully vaccinated individuals. And that's, so that's what I would open it up to, again, knowing that we don't have, there's no good ways of verifying that, so as we're seeing across the country, it's you know, kind of based on the honor system.
Well, I'm seeing that in a lot of businesses within the community and it's the approach apparently the city of Waterloo has taken. I support modifying it, I'm tired of smelling my own breath. Comments, questions? Mike?
I have some concern about tying it to vaccination, but I agree that legally we can amend the mask policy and recommend that people follow CDC guidance. My concern about tying it to vaccination is that then you effectively have a HIPAA violation when you see people wearing masks, they are presumably not vaccinated, whereas others presumably are. I do also have concern about the practicality, you know, as Supervisor Schwartz mentioned, we're talking about the honor system here, I don't, you can ask people, but you can't force them to disclose that or penalize them for not disclosing that information. I do, it has been my observation that around the state and around the country, there have been several agencies and you know, government units for that matter, that have tied it to vaccination, because that was the guidance coming from the CDC, but I do have HIPAA concerns.
I will make a motion that we modify the mask policy following CDC guidelines, but that we post no postings stating our position to avoid the concerns.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I agree.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Is that effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
What's, I got a question, what's the modification? I mean, I don't understand, are you taking masks off the courthouse completely?
Yep.
For everybody, employees and public?
Yes.
Yep.
I just want to add, sorry, yeah, so our current policy says that it's, that you do have to wear a mask, so we would basically just be modifying this policy.
Yes.
Say that to follow the CDC guidelines, correct?
Correct.
And that's what we're seeing across the state, other cities and counties as well, just kind of including some language, just general language, similar to what Waterloo's done, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we can kind of draft that in and put the effective date on here. This was in effect May 18th of last year, so we can get that amended.
It's nice to see an issue where there's some significant continuity amongst municipal governments, the state, businesses, so.
It is a little remarkable that this one went into effect a year ago today, so.
Interesting, I didn't realize.
Full circle.
It's interesting.
So we can all be thankful that we all made it on the other side of us.
Yes, I heard a voice.
Nafisa.
Nafisa.
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to clarify, so the policy would say following CDC guidelines?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
All right. Item number 9I, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19.
That means we can put the mask away downstairs, that means there'll be no masks in the parking lot, that's one.
I'd like to just bring up the American Rescue Plan, this is an okay place to talk about it, the COVID relief bill. I've been, was asked by ISAC to serve on their planning committee, so I'm staying in touch with other county officials around the state, which I think will be valuable to learn what innovative things people are learning about. The, if the money isn't here yet, it should be coming pretty soon, right James? All that stuff is in order. So I think the next thing that we need to look at is the formation of kind of a working group that will, that will work on suggestions and work on what their priorities are. And two thoughts to that, one, it could be, so I think these are important discussions, if we want to keep all supervisors involved with that, it could be that we add like a work session at the end of our meetings where we address that, but then also bring into that the, all the different department heads and other county elected officials. So we've got a big collective conversation going over how we wisely invest these dollars in our community and meet needs of the county that would have been otherwise difficult to meet.
And I understand also that the cities will be receiving money for their communities.
That is correct.
So our projects are going to be county projects and the cities are going to take care of the city projects, is that correct?
There might be, as we examine things, as has been brought up in some of the educational sessions I've attended, there might be things that make sense to have a cooperative effort on as well, I think we should be open to those conversations as well.
I think the board also should rely strongly on the advice and the guidance of our county finance director, because there has been some area governments that have been paying money back due to the fact that they were spending it in wrong places, so we need to keep that in mind, that we have to, keep James is going to have to stay abreast of all this and advise the board if he thinks it's a legitimate expenditure or if there's an if yet on it.
I would see James as probably the chair of this commission, just because so much of it's, the legwork's going to rely on him. And so my question is whether it's something we want to, I know I certainly want to be involved in those discussions and I don't want any supervisor excluded, so that's why I thought about the idea of having these work sessions at the end of each meeting.
I think the, I think the proper thing to do seems that the authority and the responsibility lie on the Board of Supervisors.
We're losing you, Tom.
My one thought is that we don't spend any of the monies on something that's going to be ongoing expense year after year after year after year.
Tom, can you hear us?
He's off, it's, he's got a, he's got a line through him.
Uh-oh.
But we can table a decision on kind of that formation until next week so everyone can participate, but those are just the two approaches, whether it's, we want to include all five supervisors and all the detailed planning, just have it at the end of our meetings.
Two supervisors.
And then otherwise send two supervisors and have all the department heads.
Andy, you want something?
I think two is good. Two supervisors.
And my thing is that they keep us informed.
Mm-hmm.
Be transparent, we got too much stuff going on around here that's not transparent.
And I'd be, excuse me, I'd be happy to provide any updates and meeting quote minutes or.
Are we silenced, or what?
No, we can hear you. We lost the Zoom connection momentarily.
Dan, did you or Craig have any other comments, this work session good for you?
Well, we were just talking that if.
Well, I think they can't hear us.
We can hear you, we can hear you. I'm going to butt in here real quick, it looks like we're on mute.
I couldn't hear him, like.
Well, I guess we'll just decide that we're going to work that, just go.
Roll call vote, roll call vote on this one?
Okay, can you hear us now?
Yes.
We were all muted for moments.
All right, we're all back on that. And we had lost Zoom for a moment there. We'll.
So it sounds like work sessions, where are we, the direction we want to go?
Yes, yes, why don't we?
With two supervisors.
Well, I think it should be the whole board.
Yeah, I do too. Or if somebody chooses not to, that's fine, but at least, yeah, as many as want to be.
I guess initially, so we're informed and see what direction it's going in and then decide as we proceed, but I like the idea of Mr. Perry being the chairperson of this committee. Yeah, I mean, we can do, we can set it up however you guys want to set it up. If you want to do work sessions after meetings, we can do that, that's totally fine with me, so.
So with all supervisors for now and then all department heads and other county electeds?
It's an open meeting.
James, what do you think is needed before you have that first work session? What will, I mean, provide you, you know, the background information and so we can go forward? go forward?
Um, right now, I mean, right now, we're just kind of combing through the, combing through the guidance. We got an email yesterday from, uh, ISAC, and so they, they provided a little bit of guidance yesterday, uh, so we're gonna be combing through that. That's, that was one thing that I was really kind of heavy, heavily leaning on because we have to follow what, uh, you know, our, our state laws as well, so, um, we're gonna be combing through that. I think, um, you know, if, if we want to start next week, I'd be comfortable with that, otherwise if you want to start a week after that, um, that's fine too. But, uh, really, I think what I'm gonna be doing is, uh, sending out, setting out, um, uh, that, uh, the, the short summary piece, um, a directive from Rob Sand as well as ISAC's, uh, four-page, um, information, uh, document here as well. And I'll just kind of put a, like I said, I'll, I'll put a little summary piece together for everyone, so we're kind of all ready to go. So, um, like I said, if you want to start next week, that's fine, otherwise if you want to start after Memorial Day, that would work as well.
I'd like to wait until after Memorial Day.
James, are all the parameters in place then, or you, or you saying all the parameters are in place?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I don't want to, I don't want to get in the middle of something and say, well, no, we can't do that.
Yeah, no, that's, we, we should be fine.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I, I needed to provide an update for the COVID.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so good morning, board. Um, first, I'm very excited to see talks about the American Rescue Plan. We know that, um, at the federal level, there's been a lot of talks about public health, um, workforce and, um, you know, just supporting the public health workforce so that we are better equipped, um, to address, um, future, that will, the current pandemic and future pandemics. And so what the Health Department is doing is, um, we, we've launched our strategic plan. We'll be reaching out to our, um, elected officials at the county level and across, um, um, the, the county, um, so that you all can have input in our strategic planning for the next five years. And also our strategic plan is going to be in alignment with, um, some of the things that we have seen designated for public health, um, in, in terms of the American Rescue, um, plan. So I think that we will also be in a position to better inform the board of where our department, um, needs to be in, in the next five years. So I'm excited to hear talks about that and, and work sessions, but we will definitely have, um, the data for you, um, because we've, you know, we've, we've really started planning on what that would look like, um, on our end. Um, so in regards to the COVID nineteen, there's been changes, um, at the state level. Um, there's been changes to the CD, um, to, um, mask guidance from, um, the Iowa Department of Public Health.